Good evening. I would like to call the Board of Commissioners meeting to order April 6, 2023 at 7:26 PM. Item number two, roll call. Ms. Jones.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Hall.
Present.
Commissioner Street.
Here.
Vice Mayor Butler.
Present.
Mayor Anderson.
Present. Item number three, prayer and pledge. Commissioner Vice Mayor Butler, would you say the prayer for us?
Lord, we are meeting today to cook matters of business. We got our hearts and our minds in this spirit of fairness, right thought and speech. Impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance today. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Item number four, approval of the agenda.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the removal of 9D per the city manager's request.
Mayor, we may add 10C there for the cleaning to 9D and 10C. You good with those two?
Yeah, I was gonna ask, so we had a motion to remove 9D and then we had a motion to remove 10C. Do we need to?
Well, I think you just, I'll add that.
Maybe defer 10C is, I think, instead of remove it.
Only reason I didn't mention, I figured we would, when we got to it, we would just set it at the future, at the whatever meeting Tom thinks the guys will get it back to us. But the other one is tabled, so it's just gone until they bring it back.
So I'd recommend a motion to remove. Okay, confused. So a motion to remove 9D from the agenda and then adopt the agenda, after that motion carries, adopt the agenda, and then when you get to 10C, just a motion to defer it to the next stated meeting.
Correct.
So just to be clear, 9D is gonna be removed because we're just gonna wait on that for it. We don't want to defer it because that would mean it would be next meeting, we're gonna remove it. Okay.
So I think you have a motion right now to remove 9D from the agenda, awaiting a second.
And I believe we got Mr. Hall, second? Commissioner Hall? Okay, so Ms. Jones, please.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Commissioner Street.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye. Item four passes 4-0, 5-0. Item number five, citizens' comments.
We have none tonight, Mayor.
Item number six, public announcements, awards and recognitions.
Good evening. Just wanna speak on some of the city events that we have going on. Last weekend, we had the Easter egg hunt at Bowie Nature Park. We had 2,000 eggs that were distributed right behind the playground and approximately 200 children showed up with their families. And afterward, they played on the playground. A big thanks to friends with Bowie Nature Park for coming out and staffing the nature center and to Mr. Hill as well. The next event that we have going on is the Arts and Crafts Fair on May the 13th. We're still accepting vendors for that day. If you would, please reach out to me here at City Hall. And we're also seeking sponsorships for July 3rd. We still have several sponsorship spaces available for that day. One item that was, that's not up on the board, I believe it is the Earth Day and Tree Giveaway on April the 22nd at Bowie Nature Park. And I believe that starts at 9:00 AM.
I was gonna read it, but you, no, 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 you can read it.
It's the Earth Day Arbor Day Plant Swap, and it's gonna be at Nature Center on April the 22nd from 9 till 11. And it's a free tree giveaway. There's going to be craft for the kids, also a scavenger tree hunt. And foresters from Urban and Community Forest Program will be onsite as well. Our sponsors for that event are friends of Bowie and the PNL Board, Parks and Landscape Board. We'd like for everyone to come out to that day. It'd be great for everyone to come out and enjoy that day as well.
From 9 to 11?
Yes, ma'am, from 9 to 11. Anyone have any questions? Put this back there. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one question. So are we planning any type of get-together to discuss the Christmas parade details?
I would like to start discussing the Christmas parade within the next month or two, to go and get that locked in. I think, if my memory is correct, last year it was myself, Mayor, and then city manager and the police chief and fire chief. And I believe there might have been a couple others, but I don't remember who else was involved. But this year, we're definitely gonna be having, city manager and I, we spoke, and we definitely want for there to be a weather reschedule day. So we definitely wanna be in planning stages for the Christmas parade and the Veterans Celebration as well.
I think it's a good idea that we move the Christmas parade to daytime. I know it's nice to see the lights, but in the daytime, we have less traffic. We have, you know, typically, from as long as I can remember, it's been, you know, on like the second Saturday at, you know, 10:00 AM. And it's always been a lot less of an issue with traffic and also safety-wise being during the day, I think it's a much better choice. Also, I would like to see us maybe reach out to Williamson County because I had spoken with them. I don't think that we need to spend the money on, you know, traffic control that was, you know, maybe something we were gonna look at this past Christmas parade. County can do it for a lot less. They've already, you know, told me that they can, but we do need to speak with them, you know, and get them scheduled pretty quickly if, you know, to be able to use that to save the money for our community, so.
Absolutely, absolutely. And we'll definitely have, I seek out sponsorships for 99% of the events. That way, it's hardly any cost to the citizens at all. So the plan for this year, especially with the daytime, is to incorporate the tree lighting event as well. So when we can, when we finish the Christmas parade, people can come by City Hall and it can be a full day for the citizens to enjoy.
And let's see, oh, the July 3rd celebration, who will be doing the fireworks for that?
So it's Impact Pyro. It's on the resolution for, to ask for you to sign. We've gone with a different company this year due to the price increase from the previous company that we've used in years past. Went up a drastic amount, was not happy with it, so I reached out to another company and they were able to provide almost the same show for about $7,000 less.
I was gonna suggest that we look into someone else, so I'm glad that you did that.
Yes.
Just because, you know, the cost.
Yeah, so with the fireworks portion, you'll see on the resolution, it, and in your packet as well, it's considerably less. And with this, they provide the shooter, they provide all the permits and everything like that. So it's a lot less liability on the city. So they handle, it's kinda like a one-key-turn show just for them. They handle everything. The city steps away from the actual pyro portion.
If it were to rain, how is that handled?
So if it's, if it's going to rain that day, we're going to try to push it back 30 minutes to 45 minutes if possible. But in the contract, we, it says that we can have a rain-out day. So that's something that we would have to discuss on a rain-out day, whether it's the next day on the 4th. Hopefully, we don't have that. I know in years past, we've, it typically rains every single year, some small portion, and luckily, last year, it was only rain for about 30 minutes. So fingers crossed, we don't have that this year.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number seven, staff comments and monthly reports. Item A, community services report.
All right, I will, I will start with our Public Works Department. The guys are staying busy with trees and limb cleanup from the recent storms. The chipper service is underway. Zone 1 completed this week, and information on the chipper service can be found on the website, or you can just call City Hall. For planning, the planning director position has been advertised, I think last week or two weeks ago. I just wanna give a big shout out and thank you to Maria Bruce, who is our office manager, and she's helped me so much with this new workload as we're transitioning right now. Our codes department, there's an ongoing search for a commercial and residential building permit reviewer and a commercial inspection services. So that should be on the, your next agenda, your next board agenda. For engineering, we have two precons this week and next week. City Center is breaking ground, they're starting, their precon is next week, so it's exciting. Bell Yards has also had their precon yesterday. We've issued 10 residential building permits in March. Our planning commission meeting is April 11th. It'll be a light agenda with two rezoning items, and there will be no work session. And that's all for this month.
Item 7B, finance report.
Thank you, Mayor Commission. Ben Knox, our new finance director, starts Monday the 10th, and I know nobody's more excited than I. We, I've been working on the fiscal year '23 amended budget and the fiscal year '24 budget. I'll try, I will get a board budget work session calendar out in the coming weeks. We will get this done. That as far as finances, other than day-to-day activities, has been my focus in that area. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Item 7C, city manager report.
Thank you. I've got, I've got scheduled for work sessions on, before the April 20th meeting, two items. One is the new employee policy rules handbook, which has been provided by MTAS, our stuff, but they help put it together. And they'll be coming before you, April 20th. Also, we have a third plan review firm, I believe Sarah said something about that, we work session regarding that. We also will bring Parkmaster Plan, we'll have a work session prior to the May 4th BLC meeting to discuss the Parkmaster Plan draft. And that'll be before the May 4th BLC meeting, excuse me.
So that work, just, that work session, May 4th is 6:00 PM? And we will have, obviously have a copy of the city employee handbook for review in, to each one of us. Right, okay. Thank you. Any questions? Anyone has? Item number eight, consent agenda, minutes from March 23, 2023, Board of Commissioner meeting.
Move for approval.
Johnson, Hall. Ms. Jones, would you please call the roll, please?
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Commissioner Street.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler. Mayor Anderson.
Aye. Item eight passes 5-0. Item number nine, old business. 9A, Resolution 07-23, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, confirming the appointment of one Board of Commissioner member to the Planning
I would like to recommend Brandon Butler. He came on the Planning Commission when I was chairman, and I've watched his increase in knowledge through the years. He's done a good job, and he's up to date on everything that we've got going right
Mr. Hogan, can you give us a little direction on the best way to handle this?
Yes, Mayor. So if there is no other nomination for a member, then I would suggest Mr. Butler could be appointed by acclamation of the board or just a vote on appointing Mr. Butler to the Planning Commission. If another member wants to nominate or appoint a different member of the commission, then I think now would be the appropriate time. And then, once all the nominations have been made, the vote could, the board could call a vote, and the winner would be appointed.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
I think that Vice Mayor Butler has done a wonderful job on the Planning Commission. But I feel that his involvement with different projects in our community forces him to have to recuse himself more than I'm comfortable with. So my nomination would be for Commissioner Stuart Johnson.
Mayor, just point of order, I don't think there was a second for discussion, but, and I don't think that's germane to the discussion in front of us, but in 2022, I believe you probably made more, you received more contributions from a developer for a campaign than I received in commission checks in the City of Fairview, so just for reference on the attack.
No attack, I'm just pointing out that there are recusals, and that puts us in a precarious position when.
I think that a motion for appointing someone else would be proper, proper business.
So I recognize I just told you something separate, Mayor, as a point of order. I think a motion, I think Commissioner Butler's right, a motion has been made. So let me backtrack and say, there's a second on that. I think the board should go ahead and decide that motion, it's before the floor. And if he can either be appointed or not, if he's not, then I think another motion could be made to appoint someone else. Apologies for the confusion.
Could I ask a question? Could you read to us the motion and then who seconded it? Because I'd never heard a motion.
I didn't hear a second.
All I heard was a recommendation from Commissioner Hall, and I never heard a second or it being in the form of a motion.
I didn't either. That's, I'm sorry, that's the reason I proceeded the way I did, because I didn't hear a motion or a second, I heard a recommendation.
And I thought you were asking for other nominations when she nominated me.
And that's what I thought as well, that's the reason I proceeded the way I did.
I had a motion by Mr. Hall to appoint Mr. Butler, but no second was made.
I will correct it that I am making a motion to appoint Mr. Butler.
I heard recommendation, I didn't hear motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to nominate Commissioner Fisher Street for the Planning
Any discussion? So how do we proceed? Thank you.
So if there's no further discussion, I recommend calling a question and voting on the motion that's currently on the floor. And if it does not pass, then another nomination can be made, or another motion can be made.
Okay, so since the first motion did not have a second, the motion on the floor is from Vice Mayor Butler as the first and Commissioner Johnson as the second. That's what we're voting on.
Yes, ma'am.
For Commissioner Fisher Street to be appointed to the Planning Commission.
That's correct.
Your nomination, what happened to her nomination? Since we went to a motion, but you asked for nominations.
No second.
Nominations don't take a second. Nominations are just made.
Well.
There's a motion on the floor.
There's currently a motion on the floor. If this motion is voted down, the board could take up a new motion to hold an election and then nominate people and then elect a member of the board to serve on the Planning Commission. But the proper way to hold an election would be to have a motion to elect someone. At that point, nominations could be made. So I think there's a motion on the floor. You could move to table, defer, suspend, or you could vote on the motion that's currently on the floor.
Well, I mean, we have a first and a second, so if there's no other discussion, I think we should just vote, right? Okay. Ms. Jones, roll call, please.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Commissioner Street.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Item number 9A passes 5-0. Item 9B, Resolution 08-23, a resolution of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, appointing city commissioners to city committees for the purpose of designating areas of interest and reporting to the Board of Commissioner members. So since Mr. Hall, since Commissioner Hall is on the Parks and Landscape Board, it would probably be appropriate for him to also be on the Public Works Committee. Then Commissioner Fisher Street is the Board of Commissioner member that is sitting on the Planning Commission now. So the Planning Committee, it would just make sense that she serve on the Planning We have finance and public safety. So is there any discussion from Vice Mayor Butler and Commissioner Johnson as to a preference?
I'm fine with either.
Same, yes, ma'am, whichever. Happy to serve.
I have a question. Even though I'm on the Planning Commission now, do I have to be on that committee also?
It would be best. It would really be convoluted if someone else served on the Planning Committee that isn't on the Planning Commission, in my opinion.
I'd like to make a motion for Mr. Butler to be Public Safety and Mr. Johnson to be
Anyone have any discussion about that, or are we good?
We may just need to add the first two that you put in for public quarters.
Okay. So will, since Mr. Ha, Commissioner Hall made the motion, does he need to restate the motion, listing each committee and who is serving on it?
Yes, Mayor, I'd recommend amending your motion, Commissioner Hall, to adopt Resolution 0823 and list the committee members by name going down the list there.
Okay, I'd like to amend my motion for the appointments to the committees. Leslie Fisher Street for the Planning Commissioner. Wayne Hall for the Parks and Public Works. Brandon Butler for the Public Safety. Stuart Johnson for the Finance Committee.
Ms. Jones, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Street.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye. Item 9B passes 5-0. Item 9C, Resolution 40- Item nine C, Resolution 14-23, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between Keystone Business Solutions and the City of Fairview, Tennessee. Do we have our new contract?
Yes, Mayor, I'll put them at your seat in between break.
Motion to approve as revised.
Second.
So, on the contract, it says the one hour at 2:50 minimum of 30 minutes. It was stated 112.50 for 30 minutes. I feel like that needs to be on there, because that was what was mentioned and kind of agreed upon, but then someone else threw out 2:25, and I don't know who.
2:25 is the hourly rate.
Right.
The, the minimum billing amount is a half hour for remote access, so.
I feel like that needs to be.
The hourly rate was the same, and I believe that was agreed to, it was just, we were just changing the the minimum amount that could be billed from two hours to a half hour.
I feel though that the 30 minutes, it should be stated the 112.50, so there's no confusion.
Is there anything, is there anything in the contract that prohibits them from changing the $225 hourly rate other than we've executed the contract and it is what it is? Is there, have you found anything in there where they can change that?
No, the hourly rate is not subject to change, and that hourly rate only applies to emergent after hour work. So, it's a very narrow set of circumstances. To answer your question, it would not be a flat fee if, if they only did, if it was a remote emergence call on Sunday, and they only did five minutes worth of work, the minimum they're going to bill you is for a half hour. But if they do an hour or two hours worth of remote work, it'll, it'll increase. So I think the formula there is still appropriate, it's $225 per hour. You just know that the minimum amount is going to be a half hour, but it could be more if, if our needs require that. Which I think gives the city flexibility if there is a real issue on the weekend.
Okay, I just want to make sure that everyone understands that we are charged 112.50 if it's within 30 minutes of remote access.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct, based, based on the formula in the contract.
Any other discussion? Ms. Jones?
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Street?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Item nine C passes five zero. Item nine D was deleted. Item nine E, Resolution 16-23, annexation of parcel on Crowcut Road will open for public hearing. Anyone who would like to speak on item nine E, you may come forward now. If no one, we will close the public hearing. Item nine E two, Resolution 16-23, a resolution to annex certain territory upon written consent of the owners and to incorporate the same within the boundaries of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, map 046, parcel 023.01 and 023.06.
Move to approve.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry. There's, there's a little bit more to that.
7409 Crowcut Road, 12.04 acres.
7409 Crowcut Road, 12.04 acres, owner Duncan McKay Potter III and Teresa B. Potter. Okay.
There's a motion, second.
Not before I was finished.
Oh.
Can we restate the motions, please?
Move to approve, he's my former neighbor.
Second.
Do we have any discussion on this? Do we have anybody to represent this item?
Property owners here.
Thank you.
My name's Duncan Potter, I live at 7409 Crowcut Road, and we are requesting this annexation.
And as stated previously, you're asking for this because you would like to have the services of the Fairview community.
Yes, to be part of the community, absolutely.
This doesn't include any rezoning or anything like that, correct?
As far as I know, no.
No zone, okay.
Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Street?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Item nine E passes five zero. Item 10, New Business, 10A, Resolution 23-23, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, authorizing the mayor to execute the site development agreement contract for Bell Construction.
Move for approval.
Second.
Ms. Toddie?
So, I think we've had a couple similar ones to this. Our zoning ordinance requires a site development agreement to be executed between the developer and the city, just to state that they're doing all of the improvements that they said they would. So, we have the reclamation bond amount in there, and they have actually executed and signed it, it's just ready for the mayor and the city attorney.
Thank you. Any discussion? Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Street?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Item 10A passes five zero. Item 10B, Resolution 24-23, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, authorizing the mayor to execute the site development agreement contract for Fairview City Center Phase One.
Move for approval.
Second.
Ms. Toddie?
So, same situation here, City Center is going to break ground for Phase One, we're going to have our pre-con next week, and this allows us to do that.
Any discussion? Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Street?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Item 10B passes five zero. Item 10C, Resolution 25-23, a resolution, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between Jan Pro Cleaning and Disinfecting and the City of Fairview, Tennessee. Motion to defer.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Street?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
10C passes five zero. Item 10D, Resolution 26-23, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between Impact Pyro Incorporated and the City of Fairview, Tennessee, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. This, this will allow us to have a 4th, July 3rd event. We really need to get this taken care of this week for timing purposes. They, I really like this contract, they take on all the liability, the responsibility, insurance, and their price is very cost-effective. Thank you.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
One question. Richard, on the five-minute time gap there, what's the difference in the 15-minute show versus the 20-minute show?
So, the, the time gap is, it calls for errors within the show. Typically, so last year's show was approximately 15 minutes and 30-ish seconds. This show with no errors, knock on wood on that, it is approximately 15 minutes and 10 seconds. So, the body of the show itself has 270 shots total for the finale, just itself. And then there's over 200 for the main body itself as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Street?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Item 10D passes five zero. Item number 11, Communication from Mayor and Commissioners. Commissioner Fisher Street?
So, I have a few things to say. The first thing is, is I want to apologize for missing a few meetings due to a major surgery. However, I was watching the live feed and keeping up with what was, what was going on. I also would like to state on record that I was not the reason for the town hall being canceled. I was going to watch the meeting live. I feel the town hall is for us to listen to the citizens. I know how much the citizens wanted the town hall, so I think we need to decide on a date within this month. I would like to suggest a town hall on April 27th. Also, when Resolution 3122 was passed in October of last year, I was told that if a development bought that property, and this is the one over with the, Darty, uh, Darty Estates, okay, sorry, I've got a lot going through my mind, um, that if the development happened, only the house that connects to the Harding, Harding Road is the only one that has access to use the road, not the whole subdivision. So, and I know that during that meeting, y'all were asking, trying to figure out what happened during that meeting and what was going on, but I was told that only the house budding up against the Harding Road could use that as their driveway access, and not the rest of the development. Right now, the property is landlocked. There's no easements or anything recorded on the deeds. So, I think that we probably need to have another discussion about everything that's going on with that property at the next meeting possibly. I want to thank everyone for being here, and it helps me seeing citizens out here showing me what you want and being supportive, and I just want to thank you all for everything, and I like seeing y'all here. I appreciate it.
Commissioner Johnson?
Nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Commissioner Hall?
Thank you, Mayor. First off, thanks for coming tonight, I appreciate it also. The 19th at 10:15 is the GNRC meeting, which is the third Wednesday of the month, and I think a few people have expressed interest in, in going, going to that meeting. Sorry I had to miss the last month, but it was due to some health issues that my wife had. The next thing is, I want to congratulate everyone that's got their name attached to the Planning Commission, the Finance, and the Public Safety, and the Parks, and Public Works. And I believe that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Thank you, Mayor, nothing further tonight.
As our chipper service has commenced, I just want to say a big thank you to Todd Bradshaw and his team with Public Works for all they've done during the storms that we've recently had. And I'm sure that everyone has been patiently waiting for the chipper service to start back so that we can clear out some of the debris from on the side of the road, so that's exciting. I'm so excited to hear about the groundbreaking for City Center. I know that everyone, they, at my shop, they come in daily and ask when is City Center going to begin, so that's something that we can really look forward to, so I'm excited about that. Welcome to Ben Knox, to, you know, to our Finance Team. Look forward to having him onboard and giving Mr. Darty some help. I know that he's been spread thin over the last few months, so that's exciting. I agree with Ms. Toddie. I got to meet Ms. Bruce in the Codes Department, and what a delight. She's helpful and very kind, and she worked through some things with me that I needed to get done, so I know that she's a big help to you. And that's, you know, I just want to say thank you to her for all of that. When I asked that the Town Hall be moved to the next month with a 5th Thursday, it was not solely because of any reason, but that I wanted the opportunity with Ms. Fisher Street and her surgery to have the opportunity on the first meeting that we would have a Town Hall to be able to be here. That's the only reason I moved it, not saying it was because of you, saying that I wanted you to be involved in the first meeting. Because I think it's important that we not begin something like that, that's so important to our community, and not give the opportunity for the full board to be here. That's the only reason. I do not agree for it to be this month. I think we need to start it on a month with the 5th Thursday because that jumbles too many meetings close together. So I think if we just be consistent about that and have it every 5th Thursday, then I think that would be appropriate. As far as the Darty Estate issue, I don't think we need to revisit that. I think at the end of that meeting, everyone would agree that some did not understand that there was going to be a physical barrier put up, and some thought that they didn't understand that, you know, some thought there was going to be a barrier, physical barrier, and some thought there was not. There's no development plan for this property. Mr. King has every right to have full access to Harding Drive, and if that barrier, and that is what that resolution was about, were to be put up, that would landlock him and restrict his access to the road which his driveway connects to. We talked about that at length, I think at the end of that, I was told by several of the citizens from Darty Estates that they were happy that we got to speak. They all got to speak that night. No one was told time limits or. No one was told time limits or anything. We suspended the rules. Everyone spoke. They several, spoke three times. We stayed here for a long time and let everyone have their say and helped everyone to understand exactly what we were doing. And I believe that we came to a good conclusion for everyone, and so I just don't think that that needs to be revisited. I had the opportunity for the first time to leave the country and go to, leave the United States and go to a foreign country. I do have to say that I know that we have things in our country that go on that are not pleasant, and we would like to see not happen again, but I can't tell you, if you've not been to a foreign country, a third-world country where there's poverty, that we should, we should feel very blessed, not only to live in the United States, but how wonderful our community is. I was so glad to get back home, and I think we should really just, you know, keep that in mind, how blessed we are to live in America and live in Fairview. And let's just help keep our community clean and just, you know, pick up trash and not throw it out. And thank you all for coming tonight, and I wish everyone a wonderful Easter this Sunday. I'll make a motion, or entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
We're adjourned. Thank you.